Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August five, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us this evening.
Tom Turente.
Paul Kaplan.
Jenny Bowser, Recording Secretary.
Bonnie Sykes, Record.
Jane McGuire.
Jack Demergen, Zoning Administrator.
All right, we have everybody but Commissioner Cornell.
He's not here?
No, he's not hiding under the table. All right, so let's get started with our agenda. First item is a review of the minutes from the July one, twenty twenty-five meeting. Seems like a year ago when we met. But the last meeting was July one, twenty twenty-five.
Well, that's right, I don't have to read anymore.
Well, Kevin's not here. So you're the likely choice.
Yeah.
I had just one comment, Jenny.
Yeah.
Where it says, under Officer Elections.
Mm-hmm.
It was decided that Commissioner Kaplan will hold the position of Vice Chairman due to the vacancy of Commissioner Smith.
Is he on my task?
Yeah, I just would word that a little differently.
Okay.
I would say vacancy created by Commissioner Smith joining the Board of Selectment.
You got it.
I don't know if she'd like being referred to as vacant, you know?
And it's hard to know how to word it.
Right.
Yeah.
But other than that, I think that was the only...
Joining...
Oh, wait a minute, I had one other thing. Under reported, the zoning enforcement officer, Z E O Demergen, updated the commissioners that he reached out to Attorney Marino to have him on the September agenda to review any potential new legislation. I would say the impact of any potential new legislation.
Okay, the impact. Okay, noted.
New state legislation.
New state legislation, okay.
All right, that's all I had.
On page two, Jenny.
Mm-hmm.
Under reported, the zoning enforcement officer.
Yes.
It says, "Report on..." I would make that "report of."
Oh, "report of."
Sounds a little bit like Jack's being indicted.
Yeah.
Report on. Yes.
Thank you for making that decision.
Good, got it.
And then on the last line of that paragraph, under the report, I think you should probably read, "Training that is required by Connecticut State statute."
Okay.
And then, last line on that same page, "Ballards" should be "Ballards," the last word.
So it's, is there one L?
No, two L's.
No A.
Oh, B-O-S.
O instead of A.
Okay.
And then on page three, under smoke shops, let's see, it's the fourth to last line, "You've got no vote by Chairman Parenti."
Hmm, oh, aye, okay, I see it.
And then there's a double "aye" after, Paul, so you could take one off.
I really meant it.
Aye, aye.
She gets sensitive.
I did. Okay, aye. Thank you, Tom.
That's it.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Anything else? All right, then, if someone prepared to make a motion that we approve the minutes.
So moved, as amended?
Seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Next item on our agenda is old business. Does anyone have anything under that topic? The only thing I wanted to mention was signs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're working on...
We are, yeah, so...
I see, I mean, there's always a lot.
Always a lot of signage. We specifically were talking about the LED lighting.
Mm-hmm.
The conversation kind of triggered from our smoke shop discussion. So I have gone up and down the post road, and everybody's gotten one of these, which is just me making them aware of the regulation, in that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission has requested that I clean up LED lighting and other signage that's on the post road. So it was mainly smoke shops, a few restaurants, you know, a couple other retail stores mixed in there.
What do you, what's your procedure when they're in violation?
I would issue a violation. This was, you know, just a heads up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I'm going to be doing this up and down the post road for the next few weeks. You know, this is basically your warning, please turn them off if I have to come back, you will be issued a violation. If they don't abate the problem, then it's a fine.
Okay.
Which we'd like to avoid.
And we had a, and this is down the road, but we have a mechanism for collecting the fines?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, if they accrue, we end up leaning the property and then filing a form.
Yeah, there was, there was a time before you were born that we had big numbers of fines and no way to collect them.
We've got a couple on residential homes that, you know, I get no response on, absolutely no movement, you know, basically willfully ignoring, you know, any notices. How would they do that, right? So we still do that, you know, when the time calls for it, but thankfully, commercially, I can't say I've been pushed to that point yet.
All right, good. Anything else under old business? Um... Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to mention, what about the training, Jack? Anything new on...
I have not heard anything.
The mandatory training?
Yeah, well, it's still mandatory. The last time I think I updated you guys, I had reached out to our regional planner to say, "Listen, are we going to be updating the curriculum so the board members who are, you know, returning after two years don't end up having to watch the same four videos every time?" They said that they are working with Yukon Clear on that, who developed the first round of videos. I have not had any update since then.
This is state...
Mandated, right?
State mandated.
Are there private companies that fulfill those requirements?
There are, kind of, if you remember, when they came out with this rule but gave the towns no avenue to get this training.
Yeah.
I think we had Vinnie come in one time and gave us, you know, an hour of training. We had the then regional planner of SCROG come in and give us a housing training.
Right.
If we have to do that again, we will, but it's so much better to have you guys do it when you want, at, you know, during your free time, online.
Right.
And do it that way, which I would still recommend you guys doing. You know, it's four hours of training, yeah, you've probably already watched them, but if we don't have any other avenues, then, you know, it's, it's, there's not much we can do about it.
And it's, it's the calendar year, right? December, this is going to be accomplished by December.
Correct. I think it has to be done by January first of twenty twenty-six. So ideally, they would be telling us sometime soon. I don't really know if they are. The last time they were working on, like, a year, a year late.
Bless you.
You know, so they just haven't really caught up to this.
And you already, you already gave us the video link?
I do, which I can, I will resend if...
Looks like we're going to be doing that.
If you guys just want to get started on it anyways, I will absolutely share those videos again with you.
I got that legal training coming through.
Me too.
My friend.
Yes, I know.
You could also, listen, if that has to do with land use, I would make the argument that you guys could absolutely contribute those hours to this as well.
How about the only part I listened to was land use? Does that qualify?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. As long as you record it, like, you know, I did this training on this date through, through, you know, the bar association, whatever it is, that would be fine. The only stipulations they have is the one hour has to be related to housing of some sort.
All right, just don't want to lose track of that.
No, that's a good point. I will follow up with them on that, but if I were you all, I would plan on having those same tutorials that you guys are going to have to go through.
All right. All right, how about anything under new business? No? All right, then, Jack, reported, the zoning enforcement officer?
Um, sure. We spoke about LED lighting. Want to remind everybody that Vinnie's on leave right now, so...
Is anybody from his firm kind of pitching in?
We, we're working with Owen, Owen Weaver, who was with that firm, then they split up. So Owen is on retainer as the town attorney currently.
Is he still, they still at six fifty, six fifty-nine?
I think so, but don't quote me on that.
How about Barbara?
Barbara is with the, the new group, so Vinnie and his partner split up. Vinnie was over here. The partners relocated, I think, to where you're saying. We haven't, at least to my knowledge, had any dealings with the firm, other than, you know, Vinnie was who, our town attorney. We have not worked with anybody from the other firm. Owen is there, but Owen is on retainer. I don't believe everybody in that office is who we switched to. I've been told just to deal with Owen.
All right.
So I let Owen know that September second, which is our first meeting in September, I let him know that we were hoping he could come in and have that discussion with us about any potential new state legislation. That, it was denied, you know, that our discussion about some of those new rules that were potentially coming out, it did not get passed the governor's desk, but we should anticipate in the future, you know, things that are going to look a lot similar to that bill that didn't get through. So we want to talk to him about any potential repercussions or preventative measures, maybe, that we could take, which would be good. And then, September sixteenth, our second meeting in September, that is when we are going to schedule our first P O C D hearing.
Okay.
So the sixty-five day review period is complete, or will be complete by then, and anybody who wants to, you know, attend the review of the draft P O C D for our approval should, should plan on attending then.
All right. Okay, good.
Other than that, I think that's about it.
All right, you were going to report on the Airbnb?
That's right, yes. I'm sure people have been hearing Airbnb issues in town. We did issue, or I issued a violation about thirty days ago now, that was appealed by the applicant, so that appeal has not yet been heard. I'll know a little bit more at the end of this week. I think we have a meeting set up with the applicant and their attorney, but I don't want to get too far into it, as it is an open appeal, so I don't want to, you know, get into the nitty-gritty.
So, I remember discussing this very lightly about six months ago or so.
More than that.
Yeah, I think it's more than that, but...
Twenty twenty-one.
Time flies.
Really? I swear, I went back and looked at it, yeah.
All right, so moving on, my question is this, we had come to the conclusion, since it was not authorized by the regulations, that it was not allowed in the regulations.
Correct.
We didn't have to legislate for something that...
Not a permitted use.
Right.
Exactly, right.
So is that something we're going to revisit, apparently?
That is something, well, that is what's being appealed. Since us going over this, short-term rentals in the land use world have become a very hot topic.
Mm-hmm.
Owen is, seems to be of the opinion that, you know, again, I issued the order, I'm standing by the order, I think that it is one hundred percent correct, they are not a permitted use in Orange. But, like I said, new things happen all the time with these short-term rentals, and I know there's been case law from other towns recently that we would have to look at, you know, and that may, you know, play an impact here.
Case law, or, you mean, regulated?
Legislation or case law?
I think both. I think other towns have been in similar situations as we are now.
And they have a decision from a court?
I'm not sure yet. That's kind of what I would like to...
The appeal was to Superior Court? Or the appeal was to the zoning?
I believe so. I believe there, I believe there have been both.
Okay.
Started out, maybe being appealed by Z B A.
The one on Ridgeview Road is an appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Correct, yes, yeah, to the Z B A. Yeah, yeah, not, not the legislative body just yet.
So they're asking for, they're asking for...
A variance?
No, they are...
They appealed the decision.
They're appealing my decision to issue the violation.
And that, is that the proper form, form to appeal?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
To Z B A?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Oh, that sounds right.
If you're going to challenge the zoning enforcement officers...
That's it, huh. I always thought it went to the Superior Court.
No, if they want, if the Z B A, let's say the Z B A rules on my behalf, and they still want to appeal it, then it goes to the courts.
Or if action we take gets appealed, it goes to the Superior Court.
We didn't take the action?
No.
I did.
Well, of course you have.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so we're sticking by our, our analysis from, you know, a few years ago, whatever it is.
Right.
That it's just not a permitted use. I mean, it's a commercial use, I mean, essentially.
Correct.
In a residential zone?
In a residential zone.
And therefore prohibited.
Right.
That's our, our side, yes.
I mean, it's not specifically prohibited, but it's not...
Anything that is not listed as a permitted, permitted use is assumed prohibited, and that is in our regulations.
All right, so, I mean, it's, it's premature, I think, to, to, to consider...
Gear up, uh...
Regulations.
Yeah.
You know, you know, us drafting regulations, because, you know, we don't know where the, where the law is on it, you know, with, you know, with the court, how the court views it.
In the coming weeks, we'll, we'll know more.
Right. The only thing...
The only thing I would say is that it could take, well, the Z B A, I guess, will rule relatively rapidly.
I am hoping, because our next regularly scheduled Z B A hearing is not until September eighth.
Who's the chair?
Dave Crowe.
Okay.
He's the chair of the Z B A. But I'm hoping, because, first off, of timing, it's, there's a holiday, September first, which is the first Monday, so we had, we have to push it to the eighth, which was regularly scheduled. But I'd rather not wait more than a month to do that, when it's already been filed. So I'm hoping to schedule, and I had a Z B A meeting last night, and I let those board members know, that I'm hoping to schedule a special meeting sometime this month, so we could at least open it, address it before September.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm kind of getting the feeling that if, if this goes the other way, that there may be a gap of, of a number of people, if this is as big an issue as you think it may be, that we're going to be late to the party if we don't, you know, at least start to look in that direction of passing legislation, especially if they go to...
Well, the other thing that, that I think Owen said, and I think this is probably correct, I didn't, you know, look at it myself, but it's, it's not that, I think, it sounds like you're worried about grandfathered. You know, I was doing it before the regi...
I want to give a clear indication to the public.
Right.
You know, we have no downside for doing it.
But I think this, Owen says, hey, listen, we don't want to, you know, muddy the waters with the current appeal, by them inferring that maybe we changed our...
Exactly. We, until this appeal is played out, we should not be doing anything.
But I, but the other, you know, what I, what I started to say was that, you know, each time the property is let out in a, you know, Airbnb type situation is a new event.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there wouldn't be grandfathered. It's not like, you know, they went into business as an Airbnb on day one, and then they're forever free to continue that.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just meant that, until, let's say, they come up and the, and the legislature in some fashion allows, under the current regulations, there was no exact prohibition, therefore, they consider it to be the, whatever, they, they approve it. I feel like, at that point, obviously, our hands are tied, we have to, you know, produce a legislation.
Owen seemed very comfortable that even if that was the case, which again, I'm not saying it is.
Right.
That there are other options for the town to take, preventative measures to make sure that it still would be, you know, the kibosh would be put on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see that as probably a difficult regulation to draft.
I would look to other towns that have done it before, it's got to be...
But how do you know? I mean, if, if I go to Florida for the winter, and I rent out my, my house for six months...
How many short-term rentals constitute Airbnb?
Yeah, I mean, where do you, where do you draw that line, you know?
Three.
Kind of arbitrary.
Solved, solved.
But you know what? The other thing we talked about, I think, when we looked at this a while ago, was, this isn't a real big problem, I mean, I mean, do we...
Well, that's what we said in two thousand and twenty-one, apparently.
Well, I know, but, you know, there's one instance.
Right.
But I mean, is, is Orange your hotspot?
Yeah, I, no, I remember then, we asked the same question, and I think my answer was two, that I've run into in my time being here, and neither one of them, when I was looking at the, the listing, they weren't very popular, from what I could see, and nobody really, you know, put up a fight.
Unless it's a parking issue, you're never going to find that.
Right.
And how would Jack keep track of these things?
That's his problem, that's Jack's.
I mean, enforcing the regulation would be...
I, I do monitor these sites, because, you know, like, it's just something, oh, you know, I haven't checked it in a little while, I will take a look. Milford, West Haven, you get them all the time. Rarely in, in Orange is it a, an option, but I think with prices nowadays, and, you know, people are only here seasonally, it's a, it's a very big money-making option, so I can...
You have an Airbnb.
I do not, no. All I know is that I'm seeing what they're, what they're charging people per night.
Oh, my God.
Which is, in my opinion, unbelievable, that people would even, you know, purchase that. But that being said, people are getting...
To be in Milford or...
No, to be in Orange, you know, I'm looking at the, sometimes like five hundred dollars a night. You know, so municipal penalties may not be enough of a...
Deterrent.
A deterrent, exactly. So that's kind of why we, we want to nip this in the bud, but people who go to Florida for six months, you know, they want to get creative with their house up here, put it on Airbnb, make some money. So I think it will be, we need to be ready, in case this does become more of an issue in Orange. I mean, just this year, I think I've had two or three.
You've had two or three in...
Very recently, yes.
And, and they've complied with your...
One of them has complied, the, one of them appealed, and the other one was just brought to my attention yesterday.
How did it come to your...
How did it come to your attention?
The first one on Ridgeview, a neighbor reached out.
That's what I'd expect, okay.
The second one, I think, you know...
Well, it was also, it was, you could find it on, on...
Oh, absolutely, I have the, I have the listings pulled up right here.
Yeah.
So, but, I can't say...
But how would you even know?
I can't say, "I found the listings." They, I was made aware of it.
Orange, Connecticut, I guess, that's how hard it is?
Just type in the, the zip code, and, you know, they'll, they'll come up. One of them, I just got a response from the owner yesterday, she said, "No problem, you know, don't have an issue with it, I will remove the listing." She was, I mean, trying to get creative with, oh, you know, "I'm away a lot of times, I was just looking for something to do." And then the other two, I have not, one is the appeal, and the other one I have not reached out to yet.
All right, but still, I mean, it's not, it's not like, these are plentiful, you're pulling your hair out dealing with them, right? All right.
Well, they, they've been a hot topic, we'll say that, but, but no, it's not, they're not coming out of the woodwork.
All right. All right, anything else on that?
I don't think so. Unless anybody's got anything for me.
Any questions for Jack?
No.
All right, then we can get going with our, oh, no, we have item number five, bond release request. This is for three twenty-nine Smith Farm Road. The release request is submitted by the, by Carol Martin and Amanda Warren. You have that in your, your packets. Jack tells me that all the work covered by the bond has been completed.
Do they have the sign-offs and everything?
That they do. It's actually been up and operational for, like, two years now.
Yes, it's not...
Yeah, the, on, on Smith Farm Road, the affordable housing, yeah. They got state funding, so I think they had to clear up a lot of stuff with the state before they were allowed to ask for this back. That has been done, and here they are.
But there's nothing, no work left that we need to be concerned about, left undone that we need to be concerned about?
Correct.
All right.
Looking for a motion?
Yes.
Move that we approve the bond, hang on, move that we approve the petition to, where is it?
LaScana Homes.
LaScana Homes, where, what am I looking at here?
It's here, it's a... It's a...
Oh, sorry about that. The bond release submitted by Carol Martin and Amanda Warren for the property known as three twenty-nine Smith Farm Road, request is released for the full performance bond.
Okay, this is on three twenty-nine Smith Farm Road in Orange?
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we come to our public hearings. We have two this evening. The first is an application for special exception permit or use, submitted by Stacy and Michael Caterbone, for property known as three thirty-three Fairley Road, to construct a twelve hundred square foot garage. Is the applicant present? Okay. Yeah, let's, I'm sorry, let's start with the reading of the public notice.
To appear one time on Wednesday, July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and one time on Wednesday, July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, Orange T P Z C. Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, August five, two thousand and twenty-five, at seven PM, at the Orange Town Hall, six seventeen Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. A petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by, submitted on the initiative of the Orange Plan and Zoning Commission, to amend section three eighty-three, one eighty-nine of the Orange regulations regarding the accent lighting on signage, application for a special... Oh, you missed that, that, that special?
Special?
Yeah. So for a very special exception permit or use, submitted by Stacy and Michael Caterbone, for property known as three thirty-three Fairley Road, to construct a twelve hundred square foot garage. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department, dated in Orange, Connecticut, this twenty-second day of July, two thousand and twenty-five.
All right, thank you, Paul. All right, so now I will ask, is the applicant present? Would you please come to the podium? And state your names for the court reporter.
Sure. I'm Stacy Caterbone, and I'll spell it for you, C-A-T-E-R-B-O-N-E. Thank you, you're welcome.
And I'm Michael Caterbone, spelled the same way.
We're here for our very special zoning request, for a thirty by forty standalone structure, which we will use as a multifunctional garage. It will be on a monolithic reinforced concrete slab, and it will have the same aesthetic as the home, same roof line, so it'll tie into the property. Used as garage, storage, workout area, workshop, all of our stuff. Anything else that you would need to know about it? We will not be using it as an Airbnb, as we just talked about.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, exactly. But we will be running electrical to it, so we have it for the garage, for the workshop.
And that is the only utility that would be run to it? We're not planning to, any running water, anything other than that, just electrical, so we can have some...
So we can see.
Something to see what we're doing in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe you guys have all of the, the only other thing that, I don't know if you guys did have, I printed out, I think, eight mark copies, is it okay to?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything that we need.
Yeah.
It's just, uh, this is for U S Patriots Steel, and this is their, their requirements for the monolithic slab. And what do you?
Stacy, what are your intentions with regard to the use of this? It's gonna be for actual garage use to?
Yep, we have a new driver in the home, so we've got another car that we need to house, um, an area for workout, um, workshop for all the tools.
You're gonna be heating this?
Um, yes, with a split, right? Is that what we're using?
Yeah, with a mini-split or something, that's the only thing, that's the, but that's the only electrical that we're run to it. We may go to Home Goods, decorate it.
Yeah, good luck. Don't ask for the napkins.
Yeah.
What, uh, what is the usual, what is the statutory, the regulations for the limitations again?
Uh, six hundred and seventy-five square feet or fifteen feet in height, which this exceeds both.
Yeah, so I have a five twelfth pitch, it goes out, it's thirty by forty with a, with a five twelfths pitch, and a sixteen feet is the maximum that, uh, these structures have to pre-fab.
You, you mentioned that the, the architecture would be in keeping with the house?
Yes.
But this, this looks to me distinctly like a pre-engineered metal building.
Oh, it is.
That's what it is, yeah. So it's a, the U S Patriots Steel, they, they have the, the prefab.
Yep, but the height and the pitch of the roof line will correlate with our home, so it'll sit right next to our house.
It just won't be an attached structure, as we were looking to do a detached structure.
Well, our, our commission had discussions quite a while ago, uh, over the fact that the architectural standards, we've been frankly a little lax on.
Okay.
And, you know, pre-engineered metal building in that, I drove by your house today. A pre-engineered building in that neighborhood is gonna be one hell of an eyesore.
Okay.
My concern was a little bit different. Um, Kevin and I had this discussion a number of times. Um, when does it become too much in terms of the size? There have been times when we've approved over the six hundred, um, limitation, because we do have discretion, I think, right?
Well, that's a, your, your question, I mean, if, if it were under six hundred and seventy-five square feet.
By reg.
Yeah, that's right, they wouldn't need a special permit.
Right.
But anything more than that.
They have to, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And I, uh, go ahead.
No, no, you're heading the, and at least I, I thought you were heading the direction, I, when the lots have been bigger, I have, we've had these discussions and we've kind of come to the conclusion that we, we got lax in the size of the structure. There was one particular that's near my house someplace, on Wheeler's Farms, is it?
Uh, on Derby, Gustafson, yeah.
Which was a whole house, it was bigger than the house. Was, where is it?
Um, it's about three quarters of the way down the page, seven eighty-six Derby Milford.
Yeah, fourteen forty?
With, uh, almost four hundred, yeah, with a lean, you know, canopy on the side.
Yeah, I believe the width of our currents for facing the house is, I think, fifty feet with the, with the garage that it is now.
I mean, this, on that question, Paul, I think, just looking at the, the map, the plan.
Yep.
The, the proposed garage is bigger than the house, if you, if you excluded the garage, the existing garage.
Because, yeah, because it's a cave, yeah, yeah.
I mean, the footprint, the footprint of the, the house minus the existing garage.
Yeah.
Uh, is, is not, it succeeds that in size.
If it was, I, I'd feel, I think, different if I, if it was set back more, if, you know, we've, we've, we've looked, not the other way, because we've certainly discussed it. But, um, I think we all feel, I feel differently when it's a larger lot or there is more, um, uh, bufferage, I don't know if that's even a word. Um, I, I'm a little bit concerned, this is a, you know, standard, almost one acre lot in Orange, and this is toward the front, meaning it's visible from the, the street with no, um, no issues at all, I don't think.
I'd be a hundred percent willing to push it back. I was just trying to match the aesthetic of the front of the house, you know, so.
Yeah, no.
But if you wanted us to go back, I'd, I'd be, you know, as long as we have the room for it, I'd be completely open to that as well.
It's a combination of, of those factors for me. Uh, I, I hadn't even gotten to the, um, the issue that, uh, that was just raised with regard to the prefab.
Yeah, the architectural, I mean.
Yeah.
Would you agree that the architectural standards apply?
Our architectural standards are mainly geared for commercial properties. Now, obviously, we have standards in our regulations for how, you know, buildings can look and how they're maintained, but we have had these before us in the past, they've been approved. We don't have regulations, I think, that would exclude something like this from being built. I mean, it's been done in the past before, and I think we've had this, this kind of conversation about it.
And a lot of the ways that these are being constructed now is to match the newer types of siding that are on people's houses, if you'll notice the.
I think that's kind of what, maybe my, the board is saying is, if it were, when you say match the house, we think matching the siding, matching the color scheme, things like that.
Yeah, everything's gonna be, the color scheme is, you know, they actually gave us it.
Yeah, maybe if you have, so maybe that's something, you know, that.
Take a look, but it's gonna match exactly what we have put on the front.
Okay, so that, that's, I think that's something to, to know.
It's gonna be as close to, it's a steel roof, but it's gonna be as close to the, the.
Okay, but it's not the, the exact colors and.
No, it is not the exact colors of that, that was just a.
That's, that's something, something good to know.
Yeah, preliminary, just to give you a, a kind of a visual, and we've planned to dress it up with nice landscaping all around and everything, and rocks and everything, so it's.
We, we assume you have taste.
Well, thank you.
We're trying to make sure that we can.
Not questioning that.
I honestly don't want it to look like a sore thumb. That was my big concern when we even moved forward with it, but knowing that we could dress it up the way that we can, I think it's gonna be all right.
The, uh, the architectural standards are in sort of a weird spot in the.
For site plans.
It's, it's under the topic, Article, uh, what is that, thirteen Site Plans.
Exactly.
And then, it, it doesn't really, it, it says in any district. I mean, there's, there's nothing limiting. I mean, this is for a site, it's a little confusing, it's for site plan approval.
Where are you?
I'm on, I'm on three eighty-three, one seventeen. And then, you know, it talks about what the requirements, you know, what a site plan has to look like, what you have to include to have a site plan application that complies with the, the regulations. So it, you know, A, so B talks about those basic requirements of a site plan, but C talks about, you know, capital C, Architectural Design Plan. And it says submission of architectural design plans shall be required for each of the following proposals. And subsection D says for all new buildings and structures. So, I, I'm not aware of anything that, I, I think I'm interpreting that.
I think you are as well.
I don't think it's talking about just commercial.
No, I, I think.
Cause I know, I know when we did, what's the development on the, on the end of, uh, Grassy Hill?
Uh, Fieldstone?
Yeah, I mean, we were concerned about, you know, long stretches of side siding without any interruption by, you know, windows or other architectural effect, you know, because that was monotonous or boring to look at. So, I, I think those architectural design plans and design standards apply. Uh, and then, you know, subsection D talks about the component parts of the design plan. And, um, the architectural design standards under E. It says, it says architectural design standards, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission shall consider the following standards and criteria when reviewing the architectural and design considerations of a site plan. The site plan, one, the site plan, architectural design and construction materials, lighting and landscaping are of such a character that they will complement and, and enhance the appearance of the community. Proposed structures relate harmoniously to the natural environment, community and topographical conditions. Uh, reasonable provision has been made for sound and site buffers, the preservation of views, light and air, and such other elements of design as may have an adverse impact on adjacent properties in the community at large. And then, four is signage, lighting and landscaping are coordinated in an overall design theme. Now, five, five, subsection five relates, I think, to just commercial and industrial. It says, it is the policy of the Town of Orange to ensure that the design and appearance of all buildings in the commercial and industrial districts be reflective of a high quality, appropriate for contemporary and future development pattern, so.
You're inferring that the other ones are for residential?
Yeah, and, and, but, but subsection five are, are, you know, added requirements with respect to commercial and industrial properties. Then six gets back to what, what I think applies to, uh, property in, in any district.
Buildings shall be brick, stone, wood, including narrow width, that's what you're talking about?
Yep. Building materials shall be brick, stone and wood, including narrow width siding, clappards or wood shingles unless otherwise determined by the Plan and Zoning Commission.
But we've had, we've had sheds before that are prefab, I assume, right? Well, especially if they're upright.
But, uh, honestly, a lot of these oversized ones are, are these that we've had in the past, yeah.
Right.
We've seen a lot in towns over the side.
And I see that, just for the record, I, I, I see that most of the lots here are bigger than the one that we're talking about now, but like the one acre lot for Monk, four thirty-four Old Tavern Road was a thousand square feet. The one for Richatelli on, uh, point seven four acres was nine hundred and eighty-eight square feet.
Richatelli though, Paul.
Yep.
Was a very dressed up garage, if you recall.
Yeah.
I mean, it was incorporated into the house in such a way that you didn't really know.
It was a garage or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that now. But, uh, my point in saying this is that most of the other outsized buildings were on much larger lots.
Well, the, the, and then there's.
Percentage of that other one, I'm sorry?
No, I was just reading, um, so we have a list of, I should, I apologize.
That's fine.
We have oversized structures. When we say oversized, by right, you could have done six seventy-five.
Right.
It's not that you can't do this, it's just that now we have to consider the, the regulations relative to what you're proposing.
Sure.
So, the oversized structures in town, we have a list, and most of the lots that were granted oversized, um, uh, structures were one point four, one point six five, four acres, one and a half acres, there are a few, two point, two acres, eight acres, two, two point three five. There are some, a couple that are around your size.
Sure.
And they, we granted about a thousand square feet, but as, um, Oz, or, um, uh, I can't remember the name, um, uh, pointed out, the, it was integrated into the.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, um, yeah, I know. Uh, was integrated into the house, so you couldn't tell. This is, this is significantly different.
I think the only one that we looked at that's bigger uh, is the Bosec, Bosec one on Ridge Road, yeah, and, and we denied that.
Yeah.
We denied that.
We have one of equal size.
Until you attach. Well, but then, then there's nothing we can do about that.
Right.
You could, did you consider?
We considered.
We have, and just because it's a steel structure, it's, would be, you know, a little more labor intensive to do such, to, to attach it, and to, if, to, unless I went back, it really doesn't seem to make sense to attach because on that side of the house is the dining room, and then the, the room in back is the, is another, uh, the bedroom.
Right.
So there would be no walkway to get in that way. Now, if I were to go further back, um, I would have, you know, there's, I think there's only two feet, eight inches or something like that, two feet, five inches.
About two and a half.
Between the pros, but like, what would you do with that attachment? It would just be like a little, a little awning or something, or?
Storage, maybe I just.
Yeah, well, probably, probably would be architecturally a more finished looking product.
How would they access?
What I would, what I would suggest is just put up a wood frame structure.
How, how do they access?
So maybe use two by eight studs with wood trusses, which are relatively inexpensive.
This is a rough look at what.
This is a rough, absolutely, that's not a finished look at all.
So these doors would be facing the road?
Correct.
Yeah.
With no access?
No.
No, we.
Yeah.
You would put a driveway?
Yeah, we'd put a driveway in, and we would dress up the doors, and like I said, there'd be a lot of landscaping and.
So two driv, you'll have driveways on both sides of the house?
Yeah, I actually wanna do like a, a half circle, I think would be smart.
I think since we've moved in, there's things that we've done, but the aesthetic of the outside, if you look at it, it would be like, it's, we're trying, we're getting there, you know?
Do the, uh, do your adjoining property owners, uh, are they, are they aware of this application?
Yeah, I spoke to Dave, who's right next to us, and he's probably like the most carefree person in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones, their families in the concrete business, um, they're fine. I'm actually gonna see if they can pour the slab if you guys approve it.
Yeah, I mean, cause there's no, there's no requirement that, that the adjoining owners be notified.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's the right thing to do.
But, yeah.
How about you and Carl, uh, Colonna?
John across the street?
Uh, no, um.
Colonna's the one on, uh, to the right of us, if you're facing the house.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're the ones that, that are just standing there in the concrete business, we haven't, we haven't.
Oh, I thought you said David.
Dave is on the, on the other side of us.
Right, and he's notified, he's.
Yeah, he's well aware of it, yeah. And John across the street is aware of it as well.
Mike, as a structural engineer, I don't wanna get into a long-winded.
Sure.
Discussion, but, uh, you could never put a structure that size on a slab on grade.
Okay, I, I'm just showing you with the.
Beautiful foundation, just so you know.
So when you're saying that, it's gotta be twelve, forty-two inches?
Right, around the perimeter.
Okay, all right.
Sounded like you were getting ready to pour a slab, I didn't want you to get surprised.
No, no, I wanna do everything right.
We're not there yet.
I don't want it blowing off in the wind, and I'm in insurance, so I, I know where that, that stuff goes, so.
So, I don't know, may, in the past, we may have, may not have paid as close attention as we should have to the architectural standards.
I, there were a couple. There were a couple that Tom brought to our attention that were integrated into the house differently, and the ones that weren't.
Well, like the, the one on, uh, St. John's.
Right, that was the one that was integrated, you couldn't tell the difference between the house and the.
And the, and the addition.
Yeah, but we've had some that were all the way in the back, that were, um, camouflage, uh, uh, there was a lot of buffering around.
Well, yeah, you know, that, that's right, I mean, you know, there was one that was, you know, uh.
Near Old Tavern, Route, Route one?
It may have been in that neighborhood, where like Drummond or somewhere around there.
Right.
Uh, like the other metal building?
Well, it was a, it was a.
It was one on Old Tavern.
Old Tavern, and that was.
That's the Monk, that's four thirty-four Old Tavern.
And that backed up to the Route one, I think, right? There was, I mean, there was, no? Oh, okay.
No, there was, there was one around Drummond Road, I think, that, uh, we, we approved it with some landscaping requirements.
Yeah, I remember that one too.
Kept it, you know, shielded from the view of the adjoining owners.
Here, we don't have that option though.
And, and, you know, from the view from the street.
Being this, for our first time, I, we totally be open to any suggestions that you guys would feel to, like, to dress it up, and, you know, obviously, these pictures, this was just a generic picture that they sent me. Basically, just to, you know.
Yeah, that's not doing you any favor.
It's not doing us any, I can, I can understand.
I imagine it's gonna look much nicer, but this is not doing you any favor.
She won't let it be any other way, so, you know.
I mean, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I just know from experience, if you go to a pre-engineered company,
Mm-hmm.
they'll never give you the kind of flexibility you want to make it aesthetically pleasing.
Right, so it's up to the homeowner to, to dress it up as nice as possible, yeah.
Just based on my background, I would suggest looking at either steel or wood studs and a wood truss roof.
Okay.
Probably the cheapest way to go. The walls are pretty high, so.
Okay.
You know, and then, and then, because you're, this, you know, what you wanna do requires a special use permit, which is the application you file. Then, these, uh, these requirements under Article fourteen of our regulations all need to be, all need to be complied with, you know, or, or we have to make findings that, for example, uh, the site plan and the architectural plan shall be of a character asked to harmonize with the neighborhood to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike, uh, character, to protect property values and to preserve and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and to preserve and protect the natural features of the site when feasible.
You're on the special se, exception requirements?
Uh, yes, special use requirements. So, I mean, the, the things that we, as a commission, need to consider on an application like this are under three eighty-three, one thirty-six, we need to look at the size and intensity of the proposed use and the size of the lot on which, on which it is to be located. And I think that's what I'm hearing is, the biggest discomfort is that this, if this were a four or five acre parcel, and you were doing this, it would be no problem, I think. But because it's on a smaller piece, then, you know, that's, that's where the, the concern comes in.
So, what if I were to take the existing garage and just go higher and, and, and off of that structure and go back that way?
Well, my understanding is that whatever you, if, if, if it's, if it's attached, if it's attached, it never even comes before the commission, right?
Correct.
So, you know, or you, I mean, you still need to comply with the zoning requirements, because you have to meet the side yard, set back, front yard, you know, all that.
But you don't have to see our smiling faces.
But, but, yeah, you don't have to bother, you don't have to bother with us.
You only get to bother me.
But eventually, they'll submit plans.
Oh, of course, yeah.
In the building department.
You can still go through the, the same process that you and I were, were working on before.
Where's, where? Where's your septic, I mean, is it even viable?
Yeah, well, septic is, we got it left side there.
Oh, good. Okay.
Now, would you guys, is it, is it something that you'd consider, like, if we were to set it back further, would you, if, if there's, if that's okay, would, would that be easier to gain approval, so it's not as far back and, I mean, it's not, not as close to the street and it.
I'd have to take a look at the lot again in the back. I mean, I was just looking at the house.
I know these buildings are very inexpensive, but they might be worth looking at, a more conventional wood frame structure.
Make sure that they have, um, copy, make sure you get copies of what our considerations have to be for this particular, um, special exception. Cause those are findings that, uh, as a, as a board, we have to, we kinda have to make, in this kind of an application.
Sure. So would you guys like going forward to have this, like, dressed up with prettier pictures and landscaping around it?
It would do, it would be, it, it would be a better application.
Yeah, that's.
Well, and again, and again, i- if it's, if what you're building is attached to the house, I don't think you need us. Well, and again, and again, if it's, if what you're building is attached to the house, I don't think you need us.
We had that discussion.
Yes, we did.
And how far is it from the house?
Two feet and two and a half feet. So you really, like, by attaching it, I really don't gain, there, there's, there's no
No, there's no way to avoid this.
It's, yeah, and it's, from what you're saying, it's on, you'd have two garages on either side of the house. One of them would be leading into a living room or a bedroom. So maybe exploring the option of if you're comfortable going on the existing garage and back on that side of the house, that may end up a more favorable layout for you guys, if, if we can get that to work.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Back here, you see.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have approved buildings this size before.
Sure.
Not
It's not too far from, I mean, listen, the ones that I see here are about a thousand square feet, which is, I mean, different from what they proposed.
This is bigger.
This is bigger.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I noticed that, yes.
Not much.
Not much.
When you're in a cape, but not much.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I not trying to be difficult, but
No, this
But I just, I just, you know, I, I think that with what's, what's proposed here, you'll wind up with a, a project that may not be all that you know, all that suitable for the, for the, for the neighborhood.
Well, that's, that's, I mean
Which is sort of, because somebody's gonna say, you know, this will get built this way, somebody will grab Paul and say, you know, you guys approve this, are you kidding me? Or something, you know?
Right, well, I, the size is of concern to me, Tom brought out this
Yeah. Let me think, because on the Ridge Road thing, I, you know, I drove by that, and it was a, it was a monster out there.
Which one is Ridge?
My first
It's, it's not on here, because they, they attached it, after they got denied, they attached it to the house, and
My, my first thought, when I saw it, when I saw it the first time, I said, oh my God, we approve that?
Right.
You know, because it
Yeah, that's a commercial.
Yeah.
I got, I got, I got some of those calls as well.
So that, that, this is not that, but it's approaching it.
Sure.
All right, any other questions for the applicants? You want to come, any other?
So, yeah, I have a question, so where do we go from here? What are you looking for?
I think that's what they're gonna, they're gonna discuss. If they want to keep the public here, well, you guys, if we want to keep the public hearing open, and allow them to bring in either revised plans that maybe would make you guys more comfortable, that's an option. Or if the commission says, you know, we have kind of seen what we need to see, they could close the public hearing tonight and take whatever action they see fit.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think you probably already have a pretty good feel.
Yeah, we're not trying to be disputational or do anything.
No, you have, you have a good feel for where, where, you know, where our heads are, are on, on the application. We could, we could hold this hearing open till the next meeting.
And that way, you have a chance to figure out whether or not you can attach or do
If you came back with some, if you came back with something that was a thousand feet or eight hundred feet, and, you know, a better designer, I mean, I, I think we could feel differently about it.
Of course. Plus, make sure that, make sure that that's, you get a better
I'll have my daughter draw some shrubs around it.
Big shrubs.
You know, the, the buffering thing doesn't always work.
No, and it wouldn't work here, but that's what, when you, you'd expect it to be a little bit more pleasing to the, to the eye in terms of
Its size and its design.
And that's exactly right.
So the size itself is not the problem, though, it's, it's the aesthetics of the size.
Yeah, for me, it's, for me, it's a combination of both.
The size of the lot.
Yeah.
Right.
But if it was pushed back, would that, would the size still be an issue?
Or the aesthetic, not the size.
Well, size is, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's both, for me, anyhow.
Honestly, I'm shocked that Colonna doesn't have a huge problem with it.
Probably because they're in Florida.
There you go.
And they got an Airbnb.
They get to store some stuff in there.
Yeah.
I started to ask, ask you if there was anything magical about that thirty-foot width.
It's, it's obviously the way that they, they pitched it to me, the way they, what they had in stock and what's available, and, you know, that's
They probably give you like three or four sizes to choose from, and you go, you know.
And the deal that correlates with each size, so.
Yeah.
Is there
And you know how the older garages are in the fifties houses, they're, they're smaller, they don't fit today's vehicles as, as, without hanging indoors and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, so, so the way this works is, everybody has their say
Mm-hmm.
Tonight. I'll ask if there's any comment from the public, and as you can see, that probably, probably get it, you know, no
Make it quiet, yeah.
But then, we, you know, we can close the public hearing, which means that we no longer take any input on the application from anybody. We talk about it, and we make a decision, you know, we approve or deny it.
Sure.
Yep.
And then you can come in, you know, with
Yeah, if you
Whatever you want.
Something different, or you change
You mean if you keep it, if we keep it open, or if we close the public hearing?
Either way, I mean, you know, we could, or we could keep it open, but you might not have enough time, because there's, there's a limit to how
Was it sixty-five, sixty-five days?
Yeah, we have to act, well, now that the public hearing has been opened, we have to close the public hearing within thirty-five days and have a decision. So
And have a decision within thirty-five?
I'm sorry, no, not have, close the public hearing thirty-five, then we get sixty-five days for a decision.
So if we, if we don't, if, having opened the public hearing tonight, if we don't meet those, that deadline,
Mm-hmm.
Us making a decision on it, then it's automatically granted.
Okay.
So we obviously can.
I'm feeling pretty solid about what I think your decision's gonna be.
But was there any clarification, I'm sorry, about, like, if we were to move it back, would that, you know, and is there, is there any consideration on that, or is that just something that's
Tough to answer hypotheticals.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
Until, yeah, until
I would say I have a problem with the size, too, although not, not by half. I mean, you, you, you can do that as a right, okay? But I, I would have a problem with the, the twelve hundred square feet.
Okay.
Based on other sizes that we've approved in the past, which, you know, it's not, it's not an exact science, trust me.
Gotcha.
It looks like about a thousand square feet in this size of a lot, we've approved before, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think our decisions have been consistent, you know?
Right, we do the best we can, you know?
Yeah, I mean, they're all a little different, but yeah, if this were, if this were, if this were half the size
Yeah, of course, yeah.
We, we'd all be in our cars by now, you know, so.
Honestly, I'd be concerned about resale ability, if you put up a metal building.
Re, their resale
Their, their ability to resell.
Yeah, I mean, well, we need to be more
I know, it's not our concern.
We appreciate you looking out, though, I understand your concern.
But, you know, it may have a deleterious effect on the
The neighborhood.
Well, anybody that lives in that neighborhood.
Right, right.
Yeah, and for me, it comes down to the aesthetics and the impact on your neighborhood and neighbors.
Sure.
So, I imagine you could make a building that big that looks really nice and fits in. But I, I don't see that right now.
Yeah, I think you would need a professional to do that, you know, an architect.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think it's impossible.
Yeah, it's probably, if you wanted to gain twelve hundred square feet of storage, that was, that was your, your goal.
And a gym.
Yeah, whatever, I mean, you, you know, I'm, I'm sure it could be designed in some way and, and done in a, in a more aesthetically pleasing way.
So if it's the same size, but we get, get it attached with a wood structure, then we don't have any issues then, basically?
Well, not for the board, right?
Right, you just gotta be, come to me, as, as soon as you attach it to the house
It's back there.
With a real wall, it's, it's not something that is the purview of this board.
Right.
Unless, of course, you needed a variance, or, which is not this board, but a different board.
Got it.
So we, we really have to look at your plans, yeah. We have to look at your plan to really tell you what your next steps are. It's very tough for us to speak in hypotheticals.
Sure, okay.
So, do we want to keep the, I mean, I guess it's up to the applicant, whether we keep it open?
Doesn't seem to me like it would make sense to keep it open if you guys are gonna say
I mean, it would make sense to keep it open if you were, say, going to engage an architect, you know, and, and come up with a new plan.
Well, my point is, they don't have to make a decision tonight, they can, you can keep it open and withdraw it at any time, you know?
We, that, that would be fine.
But there's one less thing for you guys to worry about.
Yeah, I think if, if the applicant isn't planning on going back to the architect, or going back to the engineer, and addressing a lot of these concerns, which it doesn't sound like maybe in the cards for them, then my suggestion is just act, but if there's any inkling that you guys think, hey, you know, we, we might want to look into this a little more, redesign it, re, you know, do what we can, revisit the aesthetics, the size, the location, then of course we could, but if, if that's really not realistic, which it, based on what you're telling me, doesn't seem like it is
It just seems to me, just attach it, and we avoid all of the
Yeah.
Extra
That's the easy way out.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I think that, I think that might be it.
Got it.
Yeah.
Good thing it's the right one, okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, I think that's it, unless you have
No, appreciate all you guys' time and importance.
Thank you.
This is our first time doing this, so we value your expertise, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Take care.
All right, then, if there's if you feel that we don't need any other information to decide the application, then we
No.
entertain a motion to
Okay, we're, we're gonna vote in a minute, if you guys want to stay for the vote, but, yeah.
No, you don't, I mean
You don't have to, you don't have to.
You don't have to watch the corner.
Well, I'll be, I'll be in touch, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
We have a second?
Second?
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't ask for participation from the public, but looking into the audience, I see nobody there, almost hiding under a chair.
And I, I did not have any input
All right, so
Sent to myself.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know, I think we've, you know, we've talked this through pretty well. I just, just one thing, if, if we're gonna deny the application, it ju, the, section three eighty-three, one thirty-five says the, a couple, about four lines down, four or five lines, "The grounds for disapproval of an application shall be stated by the commission in its records." So, you know, I, I think the, the record reflects that we looked at the general considerations for granting a special use permit that are set forth in section one thirty, one thirty-six, and the general, general standards as well. So I, I think the, the record reflects that, you know, we've looked at what the, looked at what we were supposed to have looked at, and, and, you know, made, made findings accordingly. So, yeah, so I mean, if, if someone is prepared to make a motion on the
A move that we deny the special, I'm sorry, the petition to amend, no, where are you? Application for special exception permit submitted by Stacy and Michael Catterbone for property known as three 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 Fairley Road, to construct a twelve hundred square foot garage on the following grounds, under section three eighty-three, one eighty, I'm sorry, three eighty-three, one thirty-six. I think that the, the size and intensity, well, the size certainly of the proposed use was outsized for the size of the, of the lot, which was less than an acre. And also, with regard to three eighty-three, one thirty-seven, "The site plan and architectural plan shall be a character to harmonize with the neighborhood." That was not this building. There, there were no structural, there was nothing harmonious about the, the prefab metal building that was proposed, unfortunately, in this, in this application.
Yeah, okay, it's, we have a motion to deny the application, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, so that's, the only other, the, the second public hearing, the second public hearing is on the petition that we, the petition to amend the, the regulations that we suggested on our own initiative. And this is language that we've talked about before. It's, it's a proposed amendment to section three eighty-three, one eighty-nine. And, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, it's got nothing to do with that, it's got nothing to do with the coffee shop that we I mean, it doesn't, right? I mean, because, you know, somehow I thought it was
I think that may have been a genesis of why we started talking about it.
Right, I mean, to me, it's not a, it's not a critical
No.
I mean, I think, again, I think what it says is, is, if this, this is, you know, it has to do with the sign regulations. If this is the sign, and there's some lighting accent around the perimeter of the sign, when you measure the sign to determine whether it's compliant with the regulations in terms of its size
Right.
you measure from the outside of the lighting, you know?
That's what this is proposing.
Right.
The board.
Yeah, and that's what this regulation accomplishes.
Right.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
No.
I don't think, I don't see anything, you know, it's
Perimeter of the sign, including the accent lighting. "The area that shall be the entire area encompassed by the perimeter of the sign, including the accent lighting on that elevation, if any, which perimeter shall be the, oh boy, the polygon." That's where it lost me, "formed by the connecting of the outermost edges or points of the sign."
Well, the polygon, it's not our, that's, that was in the regulations.
Oh, was it really?
That's nothing new.
The display element is what I, I told, I use, yeah.
All right, that's what I would think, too.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
What we're, what we're considering is this
Right.
Right here.
Yeah.
So what's in red is, is our language. What's in black exists in the regulations. But Jay, you had, I don't, you, I don't, we can't read Kevin's mind, he's, you know, but, but you, you thought maybe he was
He had talked about the side of the building, like the sign being on the side of the building, and the lighting extending. He was, that was in the discussion, but I don't know if, I don't think it had to do with the particular
Yeah.
place, and, but it was about extending that lighting.
Was this Kev's, was this Kevin's, uh, language?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay. So I assume he's not gonna have a problem with it?
No.
Okay.
But I, I think, I just, I, I guess we probably should hold this over. Yeah, because, you know, again, I have no problem with this, but I'm not sure it I'm not sure it accomplishes what he wanted to accomplish.
Yeah, well, that, and I think it's important for us to have Kevin here, being that he proposed it, so our discussion can go on the record. So the board's intent with this regulation, if it were to ever be challenged, or there was an issue, could be well documented and say, no, when drafting and amending this, this was clearly the board's intent. But I, I also think Kevin should be here to, you know, explain it a little bit.
And, and again, I thought this had something to do with the coffee shop, but I don't think it does.
I think Paul said it right, it was the genesis of, of what made us think about it, but I don't think this amendment would have anything to do with that application.
And Kev came up with it, actually.
Right.
In the context of another application, and, and then hearkened back to the, to the coffee shop, but it was not as a result of this, right?
All right, we, we all need to try to better understand what he was looking for.
Yeah.
So let's hold off on it. And again, it's not earth-shattering, anyway, whether we do it or we don't do it, but
Yeah.
Who was the, who was the
The, the purveyor of the oversized structures in this list that I got.
I, I created that for the last few, and then we updated it this time around, so I had Jenny chase it down.
Thank you very much, it was very useful.